I'll call this regular council meeting of the village of Grammont and order at 7:30 PM. I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons to open in prayer, please.
Thank you. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful, beautiful day. Thank you for this opportunity to gather here together tonight. And we just pray for wisdom, Lord God, in dealing with the different agenda items, Lord. We just thank you for this opportunity. Thank you and praise you in Jesus' name.
It wouldn't be spring without saying a thank you to everybody who took part in our ditch cleanup. It is really nice to see the ditches looking clean around the island. Hopefully, they can stay that way as we enter into summer. I did want to just give a little reminder to people that if you haven't signed up for the new Voyant system or downloaded the app, there's been a number of ferry cancellations here in the last few weeks, and it's really handy to have that on the app. There should be a link if you scroll back far enough on our Facebook page, or if you Google Voyant, it's with an A and an exclamation mark for those of us who are challenged with spelling, you should be able to find it in either app store. The last thing I want to talk about is, over the last few months, we have spent some time developing a new logo for the village of Grammont and. This was spearheaded by Counselor Boyd, and we ended up having a meeting about two weeks ago, I think, just to narrow down our options, look at some of the different things that, you know, some of the options that were presented to us by the designer. I think everybody was in agreement that swallowtail really is a universal symbol for Grammont and. When you see it, you think about coming home. So we had a secret ballot here one Friday. It was very formal. And the winning logo was this one, which you probably can't see on TV, but we'll share on our Facebook page and will be on some of our correspondence and things going forward. So with that, I think that was our last holdup for our new website, so hopefully in the next few weeks, people will see that roll out as well, and we'll be moving on with some of our new communication tools. So I think that's all I had for opening remarks, so we'll move on to item number four, which is disclosure of conflict of interest. Hearing none. Number five is adoption of the minutes of the regular council meeting of April 4th, 2020. 2022? I'm two years ago. Thank you, Counselor Turner. I'm in denial about what's happened over the last two years. I'm looking. You heard the motion by Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Greenlaw, question. All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Under additions to the agenda, I have two bills for the general operating fund. The first is for Charlotte Emergency Medical Training. It's first responder training for the fire department for $2,012.50. And the second invoice is for trace planning and design for Victoria Park, and it's for the pool plan, for $13,409. We had agreed back in November to go forward with trace looking at this for us, so this is really just a formality, so we have the number in the minutes. Are there any other additions to the agenda? Hearing none. Would someone like to move? Moved by Counselor Greenlaw.
I'll second.
Seconded by Counselor Toll for the additions to the agenda. Any question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Item number seven is the RCMP report.
My apologies for not being with you for the last meeting, and so because I wasn't here then, my notes are going back to the one I was at previously, which would be back on March 14th, I believe. So just looking at our file count from March 14th till yesterday, we had 85 files, as opposed to last year, for the same time period was 89, so very similar amount there. Breaking it down, we had three assault with a weapon investigations, one where charges have been laid and one that is still under investigation. We had three break and enter files that were all, they all thankfully turned out not actually to be break and enter, so that was a good thing. We did have two flight from police investigations where, both of them involving ATVs. One, we were able to identify the driver and charges have been laid in that matter. We had three mental health files where two individuals were brought to the hospital for assistance. Eleven traffic-related files, two well-being checks, and a missing person file where the person was located a very short time later. We did also have three sudden death investigations, two of which we're still waiting on reports from the coroner's office. On that note, we do have a local coroner now who will be of great assistance in these matters. Just a point of clarification or a reminder, she does not transport the body. That currently is the role of the ambulance service. All three agencies, the RCMP and the coroner and the ambulance and the hospitals, while are working together to ensure a high level of service is being carried out. And we have been meeting to discuss any challenges or issues that we've faced so far and how we can work through them to make sure we're doing the best that we can there. Grammont and, RCMP is working up on stepping up our presence in the community and the school, and we do have a new member who just arrived yesterday, Constable Corinne Blaze. Hopefully, on one of the next council meetings, she'll be able to come maybe and introduce herself to everyone. And the last thing I wanted to bring up for consideration for the community is the Neighborhood Watch program. These are kind of starting to start back up again. And there is organizer Lisa Williams. She's the Community Programs Officer, and she works out of the St. George RCMP office, I believe. She would come over and do a presentation if there is interest in starting up one of these programs here. It's not an RCMP-driven program. It's very much community-based and run. And if there were enough people to participate, there would be people throughout the communities on the island, and if they saw something going on, they would report it to their program coordinator, and that would be the person who would then relay the information to the RCMP if necessary. And so I would just say, if there are people interested in being involved or being a coordinator or getting this running, you can contact myself, and we can talk a little bit more about that. And if we, like I said, if we have enough people who are interested in doing this, then I can reach out to Lisa Williams there and see about her coming over and maybe having a meeting where we can discuss this further. Does anybody have any questions for me?
Not a question so much as a comment. Maybe we could put a post up on our Facebook page about the Neighborhood Watch and direct interest to you, if that's okay?
That'll be fine, yep.
That's what you were saying? Okay. Any other questions or comments? Getting off easy again. Thank you very much.
I'll take it. Thank you.
Okay, that was number seven. Number eight was business arising from the minutes, which we had none. Number nine is old business. 9.1 is Maple Grove Cemetery, the letter of request. Counselor Russell was supposed to address it, but he is under the weather tonight. So I'm, look, do you want to do that, or do you want?
Well, my conversation with Counselor Russell this afternoon, he basically indicated unless either Counselor Brown or Counselor Green through Finance and Property were comfortable speaking on his behalf, then probably the best next option would be to postpone to the June meeting.
You only push that once, right? Okay, you all have the note from Greg, and that pretty well sums it up. I guess the Finance and Properties Committee, I don't think we have to go real deep here, and I, if they were, I'd let Greg come, but come answer your questions. But I think what we're looking for, we think that Phil's proposal to have a cemetery association makes sense. I guess what we're looking for is council endorsing us coordinating, trying to get that group together and working. What role the village would actually play in that is not defined at this point, or any other group, if any other group is interested, or if it's just Maple Grove. But, you know, before we spend time, energy, and, you know, effort on it, we want to make sure that we're following the directions we were given.
Any questions for Counselor Green?
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion then that we authorize the Finance and Property Committees to try to lay the groundwork for the Grammont and Cemetery Association to be formed.
You heard the motion from Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 9.2 is Gannet Rock update. Counselor Layton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow councilors. As everybody knows, Gannet Rock Preservation Society put a proposal in front of council a few months ago to possibly the village of Grammont and take over the lighthouse, and they in turn would lease it from us and hopefully revitalize it, make it a tourist destination, extreme adventure vacation. But they've had a couple of engineers go down, and they've done a feasibility study. When they first started this, they kind of thought like $10 million would be like a lot of money. But they had 66% of that funding already secured. But in the last few months, a couple of engineer and engineers got together and they collaborated on it. They've both been down, and they've looked it over, and they've come up with a cost project estimate of $17 million. That was a non-evasive survey. They weren't allowed to drill a hole. They weren't allowed to rip anything off. They weren't allowed to look under the shingles. They weren't allowed to do anything. So in reality, that could inflate to twice as much, which is $34 million. So I guess the lighthouse has stood there for 191 years, was probably gonna go in the ocean very soon because it's not feasible. It's sad. It's done its place. I think there will always be a light there, but the structure will be gone soon. I don't know if that's a navigation hazard that we should look upon. It should be burned. It should be put down. I hate to see somebody crash into the lighthouse floating by, but anyway, they've spent a lot of time, they've spent a lot of money, a lot of resources went into this project, and I give them 100% support on it, but at the end of the day, it's just not feasible. So it's dead in the water, as they say. But thanks for your time, and that's the end of Gannet Rock. Yeah, it is. It is. Any questions, comments? It's sad, but it's just 10 years ago. We could have probably, could have probably done something, but it's so far gone. It's a $34 million project, so that's out of our scope, out of anybody's scope. So, but anyway, thanks for your time in that matter, and I guess that's it.
Thank you, Counselor Layton. Any other questions? I would echo your thanks to the group that looked into it. It was, it was an undertaking, I think, when they started it. So at least we have an answer to the question of what it would cost, which is always good. Item number 10 is the 10-minute open session. I'm just going to, in case we have anybody who wants to jump up and speak, because we have people here, I just want to remind everyone that the, during the 10-minute open session, it's just open for anyone who wants to speak to council. We are not able to ask questions or provide comment on anything. It's just a platform for people who want to address councils. So with that, the 10-minute open session is open.
Madam Mayor, Honorable Councilors, I'm, I've come today because I realize that there's a lot of missing information on some of the things that we're, that the island is looking at, that we maybe should have had. About 10, 12 years ago, maybe, we did a methyl mercury study on Grammont and, but I worked with a bunch of people who worked with McMaster University, and the thing I'm here today about is water. And our water table on Grammont and, they took a picture from the Hubble, and we offered it to the village at the time the village turned it down. But it showed the two plates coming together, the North American Plate against the European Plate, and it showed the complete difference lying down the length of the island, which Audrey Ingalls would have taught us, if you were my age, from Whale Cove to Red Point. And it showed an area of cistern of water that would have been ideal if we ever became Manhattan, because we're the same size as Manhattan. But anyway, that was turned down at the time, and it was, you know, instead we sent a full scholarship for somebody to go to UMB, which is what they gave us. Anyway, that information really was, should have been added to the knowledge of the village. And the reason I'm saying this is because I hear there's proposals to make a quarry in the back of the island, which would, could be a place for toxic storage or dumping or leaching, whatever. And because, also I worked with Paul Arp from UMB, and they did the study on all the wells that thought they were artesian, that they could get information from on the front of the island, and we studied where this water was coming from, because we thought the force of the bay was causing these artesian wells to be had. We found out that no, all, every well that was tested, and there were several, actually could be followed back to a marsh or bog on the back of the island. Not only could they follow them back by the biomass, which is the leaves and the little bits of piece, they could tell you which bog. Now, the Hague Court has just brought in water, a declaration on water as a human right. There's a ministerial declaration of the Hague on water security. And one of the things it is, is that the governance of, to ensure the good governance involves the public and all interests of all stakeholders to be included in the management of water resources. And because this, the water resources of Grammont and depend immensely on the backwater, because on the front of the island, we have high deposits of copper at Mill Hill, arsenic at the terminal, arsenic in this area, manganese in this area, powder silver and King Street, high iron in Woodwards Cove, high calcium in Castelia. We need the back of the island's water to dilute our wells that we do have in the front of the island. I think that information is needed because the water belongs to all of us, and it is not, the only, it's, your, our councilor is representing the people of Grammont and, and I certainly hope that they think of that above and beyond companies. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Sharon. All right. So item number 12 is petitions and/or written submissions to be read. Foster Fisheries Appeal to Council. CEO Reiner.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. The Foster Fisheries had made an application to PAC back in March to rezone a piece of residential property to industrial. After review of that application, PAC had turned it down. So part of that process, Mr. Foster is able to appeal that decision to council. So tonight was supposed to be the night to review that appeal, but when I reached out to Mr. Foster, unfortunately, he was unable to attend the meeting tonight to represent himself, and he has asked if it was possible to postpone the appeal till the next regular council meeting in June.
I'll open it up for questions. I do just want to say that I think it's important that we have a fair, transparent hearing for Mr. Foster, so I see Counselor Green leaning forward.
Yeah. Meant to reread some of that, but are there time constraints for an appeal to be filed and dealt with after ruling? I mean, I don't have any problem with waiting until he's back and talk to him. I think we should, by all means, but I don't want that to nullify his request, if you know where I'm going.
Yeah, no, I hear what you're saying. I think the fact that Mr. Foster and myself have had several conversations back and forth, and he would have allowed this to go forward today if he hadn't been able to make it, but he had asked if it was possible, and I had said that I would put this forward to council to see what everyone thought, but to give him a fair, a fair trial for his appeal, that we would certainly look at moving it to the June meeting.
Any other questions? Counselor Boyd?
Would the, I believe there's a cease and desist for all activities in that pit currently? Would that, that would continue through as the appeal process continues on?
Correct.
Right.
And I had a numerous amount of phone calls and text messages, emails today from adjacent landowners with their concern, and I had basically told them what was going on and that the recommendation was going to be to postpone this until June, because there was quite an entourage of them that was looking forward to coming tonight to, to speak on their behalf about the rezoning, so.
Counselor Green?
Just wondering if this is going to be that big of an event, if it's something that warrants a standalone meeting rather than rolling it into a, trying to, in an hour and a half meeting that we have, to try to find time to give everybody the opportunity to present their opinions and go on with it, so.
I would think we could certainly look at having a special meeting if there is that interest in it. Maybe have to have a couple of conversations around logistics of what that would look like, but I think it's, I think it would be possible if that's the wishes of the group.
Mr. Foster, I believe, is back on the 12th, so we could have the meeting soon after that, instead of waiting until the regular meeting in June.
Yeah, I think if we could coordinate with all those that have texted you and called you, and try to, you won't be able to accommodate everyone, I'm sure, due to whatever, but accommodate as many of those that would like to come, to come, and, you know, just so everybody has their chance, their kick at the can.
Any other questions, comments? I'd be looking for a motion to table this, and I would suggest we don't put a date on it, we just table it, and then we can have a special meeting whenever we can get it called. But somebody needs to say it a bit more formally than that? Please?
I would move we table the petition from Foster Fisheries to a time that can accommodate as many participants as possible, to be arranged by staff.
You heard the motion by Counselor Green. Do we have a seconder?
I have a second.
We're all very excited. I heard Counselor Toll just seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. There's no correspondence, so new business. 14-1 is insurance seminars. CEO Reiner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got to be honest, this is Counselor Russell's baby. When he took the insurance package home, he come across that our current insurance provider offers free seminars to council and staff. So he just wanted me to put together a couple of recommendations on some possible seminars to take over the next little bit. And I guess at the end of the day, the one thing that seems to be a common occurrence would be risk management. There's also one for risk assessment, but they actually have a risk assessment individual that's going to be coming in September to do an actual risk assessment of all of our facilities. So they were supposed to come just before COVID broke out, but that got postponed, so we've rescheduled that for the fall. So I guess at this point, I would recommend doing the Risk Management 101, as well as it seems recently we've been getting more and more involved with contracts, so they actually do have a seminar on, beyond the basics with the contracts and waivers. So those would be the two that I would make the recommendation to, to reach out to the insurance provider to provide for seminars for, for any council that wants to attend and staff.
Any questions? Counselor Layton was leaning in there. He had a question, but no. Do we, do we need a motion to proceed with that, or you'll just organize and we'll go from there?
Trust me, he won't let me forget.
Understood. Okay. Item 14-2, BGC, Call for Board Members from Council, which is apparently me. I think my understanding is the Boys and Girls Club is looking for a member of council to sit on their board, so we're looking for a volunteer who would be willing to join their board and report back to council. It does seem that when you miss a meeting, that's when you get volunteered for things. So if somebody wants to make a motion, or do we want to approach Counselor Russell to see if he's interested, or is there someone else? That's, the glee around the table right now is really hard to sort of keep control, isn't it?
I think, I think we should approach Counselor Russell, and maybe not just steamroll him.
Probably the polite thing to do. I think we should probably have a motion to approach him and then go from there.
I'll make that motion to approach Counselor Russell about the vacant board position on the Boys and Girls Club.
Heard the motion by Counselor Boyd. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Counselor Brown. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Moral of that story, don't get sick and miss a council meeting. Item 14-3 is GMCS graduation. We have two bursaries that the village normally presents, one for university-bound, one for community college-bound, so we need three people to form a scholarship committee to review the applicants and determine who that would be. And I think if I remember last time, it was done before the election, so this would be the first time this group has done that. So anybody interested? It's like a, it's a one, one-time deal over the lunch hour usually. I see Counselor Layton? Counselor Toll? I was gonna say, we could put Counselor Boyd, I'll put all four of you on there, and then if one of you can't make it, then you still end up with the three people. How's that?
I'll be your all.
All right. Can I have a motion for Counselor Layton, Screen Law, Toll, and Boyd to form the scholarship committee? You heard the motion from Counselor Turner? Seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Be really awkward if one of the four of you voted against that, I gotta say. 14-4, Regional Service Commission Restructure of Local Government. Counselor Green to address.
Yep, thank you. Really, this is, was a two-part questions I had on this. One is, what do we have today? I mean, we pay them a fee every year, or membership, or what was it? Membership fee? I didn't know what we got for that membership fee. We don't get T-shirts or hats or anything. We must get something. I was kind of wondering what that was. I've been reading in the paper, different things that the, I can't remember the guy's name.
Hollis.
Hollis has said of what he anticipates the new model is going to look like going forward. The email we got today answered some of that, because some of the answers I want just aren't there yet, and that's, that's fair. But I'm not sure what we're getting for our money today. I know we, we have been talking of, you know, other services we may be able to utilize or we're paying for and we're not using, and I'd just like to, I don't know if we'd want to, if you haven't been around the table long enough, is our rep probably to get all the background on all that, or are you?
So Thursday night, I attended their annual meeting, and I approached Claudette, whose last name I can't remember, who's sitting in for Hollis, who's out on sick leave till sometime in July, about sitting down, because this has come up at various committees. We've talked about what services the RSC has, how we can really improve our relationship talked about what services the RSC has, how we can really improve our relationship with them, which I think overall that's been one of the goals of this council, generally has been to improve our relations with various groups. She was very receptive to sitting down and talking to us about that, so she's a little bit nerv, she's a little bit nervous about doing like a public speaking type of thing, but she said she'd come over, I said we'd be very informal, just have coffee, we're not really a PowerPoint presentation kind of group at the best of times. The other thing that we are getting, sort of, we're paying for it in addition, but we, they do look after the solid waste and manage that facility over there. They have a recycling program that they offer to other municipalities, but it's a curbside pickup, and so I'm sitting down with Counselor Toll and C.O. Reiner on Friday to talk with their coordinator of the recycling program about how we might be able to tap into that. One of the challenges is we're paying less for our tipping fee because we're not participating in the recycling, so we'd really need to do, once we get some numbers and some data from them, to do like an analysis of what the finances, what the impact of that would be. So, all that to say, I don't know if that really answers your question about what we're getting for their service, but I think, in my mind, I think it's time that we sit down with them and have a conversation, which is why I initiated it with Claudette on Thursday night. And I was glad to see the email come out today on where we are with local governance. I will say, I met the new transition coordinator for this region, he was there Thursday night as well. Part of the problem is, we had started with one transition coordinator, he left, and now they've had to hire a second one, so we're that much further behind the eight ball, and then with Hollis being out for, for health reasons, I think it's just compounding the fact that nobody really, we're all trying to deal with a lot of unknowns. And we're probably in a better place, I think, than a lot of other communities, in that we're not dealing with our own restructuring of local government. I might ask Counselor Boyd, I'm gonna put him on the spot here a little bit, U-M-N-B had asked that the RSC mandates be postponed for a year, and I'm wondering if that might be, he might want to talk about that a little bit, but it might be something that this council might want to ask for as well, because realistically, for a group that's just starting to get the outline of what they're supposed to be doing to come up with budgeting and a game plan going forward on things like economic development, tourism, all these other things, when you have other municipalities that are in chaos because they're completely restructuring and facing election, I think it's a lot to ask. So I don't know, Counselor Boyd, if you want to address that or not.
Yeah, Your Worship. It's been heavily talked about around the executive board at U-M-N-B, and actually U-M-N-B has sent a letter in support of pushing everything back a year, and actually just today, I don't know if anybody saw on the news, or if you follow U-M-N-B on Facebook, they announced today, the, they're going to be hiring 12 new executive directors for some of these new RSCs that are being formed, some RSCs that are in flux with various different executive directors in and out, and whatever, so, so there's a lot of moving parts already. I mean, I think overall, the whole plan is sound, but I think the timeline is heavily skewed, and it's something that they're trying to push through, I think, a little bit too hard on the province. So hopefully, I have an executive meeting in a couple of weeks, so we'll hopefully have some more news there, but I certainly think that it wouldn't hurt. I mean, we have got off pretty easy as far as the municipal forum goes, but it certainly wouldn't hurt to add our hat to the ring of those other municipalities saying, can we just, can we get, give us a year to get our feet under us and figure out where we need to be and what we're going with it, so.
The only other thing I would add is that they did form, the RSC has formed a committee of all the municipalities, plus they're looking for a rep from the local service districts. It's made up of the CAOs, and I understand Chris has agreed to sit on that, and they're hopefully meeting next week or the week after is what they're aiming for, so. I don't know if that sort of answers some of your questions, it was a lot of words, but I'm not sure of anything definitive there.
No, I think if we can get Claudette in the room, and I think she's been at Southwest Solid Waste for a long time, and then transitioned in the, over, that she's got the background, that she could answer probably all the questions that I would have.
All right, well, we will work on getting that set up at some point in the next few weeks, and, any other questions or comments? All right, 14-5, U-M-N-B Annual Meeting, Counselor Boyd?
All right, I'm gonna do my sales pitch. For all the new counselors that haven't had a chance to attend a U-M-N-B AGM, and for those that have painfully sat through six-hour virtuals, AGMs, the U-M-N-B, of course, I'm very pro U-M-N-B, obviously I'm on the board, it's a great chance, the AGM especially, to kind of mix with other communities that share kind of the same interests and hardships and stuff that you might be having trouble with, it's great. It's a great brainstorming kind of place, there's lots of great, there's lots of great speakers, there's lots of great functions that happen all throughout, and it really kind of puts you, it really makes you realize that a lot of the stuff you're having issues with in your municipality, and there's a lot of municipalities that feel the same way, so the power that I think U-M-N-B holds is that it brings all these municipalities together as one voice, because a lot of the times, something that might be affecting Graham and Anne, might also be affecting Bucktoush and Emmetston and also, you know, there's things, especially with this, with this new municipal plan update, it's, it's a, it's a great opportunity to meet other counselors and other staff and mayors, and there's lots of training programs, the trade show's always good, there's good food. Unfortunately, this year, it is over Thanksgiving weekend, because, because we, U-M-N-B booked the Delta two years ago, pre-COVID, and we've pushed it back two years, and so the Delta said now, if you don't use it this year, this weekend, you're losing your fairly substantial deposit. So it is, unfortunately, it's a tough weekend for people with families, which is all of us, but if you get a chance to even go on a Friday, or just even if you get up Saturday for the day, it's really beneficial and worthwhile. We'll be talking a little bit more about it, we do have a zone meeting Thursday night if anybody wants to hop on that Zoom call as well, but it, it's definitely worthwhile, and I think everybody should go. I know everyone can't all the time, but it's a, it's a good time, and it's really, it's an educational experience, especially for new council, seeing everything else that's going on around the province, so. That's my sales pitch.
At least it's Thanksgiving, but not Moose Weekend.
Any other questions for Counselor Boyd? Counselor Turner?
I just wanted to clarify for the general public that it's a union of the municipalities of New Brunswick, because they wouldn't know what we're talking about.
Yeah, and a lot of times I forget the M, so everyone's like, U-M-B? What are we doing? But yeah, and June 1st is registration weekend, so the village pays for your registration and all that stuff, and your hotel, so, and probably traveling expenses, I assume, so. So you've got till June 1st, till that's kind of, we got to register then, because there's only a certain block of rooms, because we know that not every counselor in every municipality's gonna go, so we don't book the whole hotel, but June 1st is kind of your, your toast? Oh, your spouse? Yeah, that makes more sense. Anyways.
If toast is a deal breaker for you, Counselor Boyd, we can probably look after that, too. So, I attended, I think I've only been to one over my course here, Counselor Turner was at the same one, it was my first year as a council, it was very informative, it just, the timing of it didn't work out after that, so if you do have some free time on Thanksgiving, I would, would encourage you to consider it, and if you are interested, I'd say get your name into Esme, and she'll help you look after the arrangements. All right, 15-1, Solid Waste Committee Report.
Madam Mayor and fellow counselors, I just wanted to update everyone on what's been going on at the transfer station lately. We've, as you know, we've been working constantly on how we can lower our fees and our trips away and be more efficient, recycle more, and all that, that's my thing, I guess. And we've been trying to figure out lately how to deal with the bait boxes, and I'm surprised and pleased and really happy that Bill and I had been talking about it, I, we had been talking about it, Bonnie and I had been talking about it, trying to get the fishermen to sort the plastic bags out of the cardboard, instead of taking them all to the dump and they can't go, they have to go to the landfill, so that increases our costs, and it averages about five tons a week during peak season. That's a lot of landfill, a lot of stuff going to the landfill, and even on the off-seasons, it's still one to two tons a week. I don't know what that works out to money-wise, we can certainly figure that out, but it's a lot. And Derek and Richard, who work there, had heard us talking about it and how we were trying to figure out a way that we could deal with this, and we were, you know, gonna put something together to get the fishermen together with it and figure it out. Well, they kind of took it on themselves, and they spoke to all the fishermen as they came in with this, this stuff, and were explaining to them that we were looking to get them to separate the plastic from the cardboard. The plastic, we cannot recycle, it has to go to the landfill, the cardboard, we can either bail it, or we can compost it, or just take it out to our C&amp;D site. So bailing it wasn't acceptable, the, they won't accept it because of the smell. It's clean, but it smells like rotten fish, so nobody really wants that in the middle of their cardboard bales, I guess. So we have been putting some of it out to the C&amp;D site, we have put in a request to Joyce at the, I can never remember what it's called, Natural Resources?
Department of Environment, Local Government.
Okay, I'm learning these things. And she was away the day that we requested it, and we spoke to someone else, there's emails I have, I think we sent you the last one, we passed it around in the package, that we had some questions to answer, which I can answer all the questions, that the boxes are clean, they will break down quickly, we can send her a picture, we have lots of space for it now that the traps are gone, we have lots of areas that we can move in, so we're just waiting for final approval from her to continue putting it there, so we can, you cover it with dirt, it'll break down within a couple of years, and it'll be dirt. So that's what we've done there. Most of the fishermen have willingly agreed to set up separate boxes to sort this through, and as they bring it into the transfer station, the plastic bags go into the trailer, the cardboard is put aside to do what we have to do with it. So that should save us quite a bit of garbage going away. And in the next couple of months, I have Sonia coming from the Used Fishing Gear Coalition of Atlantic Canada, and we're going to discuss ways to, she's also now involved in recycling other products, so we're gonna look at ways to go around to everybody with their oil usage and filters and like we have at our shop, and getting everyone to get together and recycle all that, which is already done by us and one other shop, and then we're trying to get everybody else on board, and that'll stop a lot of stuff going to the dump. We have those oil boxes, which are like bait boxes, so you can separate them out the same way, and, and everything gets recycled. So we also, I have an attachment in your package for the, the transfer station contract that expired December 31st, 2021. So at this point, we really haven't been able to go over too much, so we've added an amendment to this to extend the time till December 31st of 2022. And over the next few months, we'll discuss what we want to do and how we want to do it, and speaking with counselors about what we plan and what we're looking for, so that by the end of the year, we can have a contract ready and move on from there. So that will be our next plan to get done before then. I think that's all, so I guess in closing, I'm looking for someone who will make a motion that we can pass this amendment to the contract so that we can continue on. And that's about all I have to say, anybody have any questions, or?
Would you like to make that a motion?
Oh, I, if I could make that motion, I would like to make a motion to approve the amendment to the existing contract with the transfer station and the village.
You heard the motion by Counselor Toll, seconded by Counselor Green Law. Questions on the report and/or the motion? Counselor Green?
Just believe probably that back page says Village of Graham and Anne Waste Committee. I think all contracts have to be signed by the mayor, deputy mayor, CAO, someone that's authorized, and not a committee member.
All right, we'll double check that, yeah. Thank you.
Just going back, looking at the past two contracts, they both stated the same thing, so we're not sure.
But the mayor and clerk signed.
Pardon?
The mayor and clerk signed.
Yeah, but.
But just on behalf of the committee, please.
Yeah. But, yeah, okay. Yeah, I just didn't want you to jeopardize yourself.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Contrary minded? Motion carried. 15-2, Rec. Directors Report, Rec. Director Chris Reiner.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. April showers brings more showers and overcast days, so, but we did get, we had a meeting with the baseball crowd, and one of the biggest things they'd asked for was, where we have such late springs, if we could get some of the equipment set up in the arena, which we did, we've got the batting cage set up in there, there's an indoor pitcher's mound that we built, a couple hitting screens, et cetera, so that's been a kind of a busy place the last little bit. The minor ball had their registration the other night, they had a really good turnout, they're hoping to have three house league teams this year, plus a T-ball, possibly a team that will travel. Of course, softball is going strong as usual, we have had a request to, to put up a couple telephone poles with some netting to try to protect the adjacent landowner there. Been in contact with Dutchman about getting something set up for that. Today was actually the first day we were able to get the equipment on Seal Cove, the boys went to Seal Cove this afternoon and started doing a bit of work down there. Grand Harbour is a long ways away. Castilla, much the same, but hopefully we get some nice weather and some good, some good wind that'll help dry that up sooner than later. We tentatively set the side possibly the middle of May for begin date, but that doesn't look real reachable at this point, but if we can get Seal Cove ready, we can at least get the softball going. Trace Plan and Design, we're supposed to have been here last week to do some further investigation into the kind of the property development that we'd asked for. What they were hoping to do was be able to bring their drone over, they have some 3D imaging that they can produce to help spit out some of the things we were looking for, to kind of, the different aspects of the property we'd like to see developed. Again, spring weather kind of permitted that, or postponed that, so they're hoping maybe to get here this week for that, to finish that off so they can come back with a report on what they see moving forward. Talked to the playground installers today, the Northhead Playground, the piece that we had ordered for there is delayed from the manufacturer, that seems to be a common occurrence lately with, with equipment. We've, I had Howard go over and pull some of the recently purchased fixtures from the swimming pool, washroom, we had upgraded that a few years ago, just before COVID, and so the sinks and the toilets and that was fairly new, so he's pulled both of them out, and we've taken them up and installed them on the washrooms on the hill, those ones were really, really old, so hopefully that'll make for a little bit better facility for there, for Victoria Park. Programming with Tanisha, just a few stats, just one touch on, her weekly kids' club, she was averaging around 12 kids, her weekly Lego club averaged a little higher, around 15. She had teen night, which she had 10 teens, there was 10 family members at her last movie night. Her last trip to Rotary Isle, she had 13 of the tenants participated. They offered a lady self-defense course, and 10 women signed up for that. And the last two things were very, very interesting stats, they held a seniors' lunch at the curling rink, and they had 54 seniors attend that lunch. And as you all know, the legendary Easter egg hunt, she, she just kind of guesstimated, I think, because it's pretty hard to fasten down that many kids to get a good head count, but she was just guessing on about 130 kids, so that was very well attended, so just want to thank Tanisha for all that hard work in that. But on that note, this is Tanisha's last week, unfortunately, the, we put the advertisement out, which closed the end of last week, so this week we will be reviewing those and working with personnel to start arranging some, some interviews moving forward, and hopefully get that position filled sooner than later. That's it for my report.
Any questions? Guys are really quiet tonight. 15-3, Transportation Committee Report. See if they're quiet for you, Counselor Layton.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, fellow counselors. I was hoping to share with you some good news about our airport, I believe Brunswick Engineers almost got our tenders, packages, everything, the package ready for Chris's desk, but it didn't arrive there today, so I'm not gonna go down the road and say when that's ever gonna get here, but I think we're right there, and hopefully we can get those tenders out and that project started. There's a little, little query we're gonna have to deal with as to how we get the medevac in and out going through this process, but we'll put that on Chris's desk as well, so I'm sure he can figure something out there.
You want me to do the medevac place, is that what you're saying?
Well, you just figure it out, just figure it out. No, but it's something that we're going to have to deal with. The airport's run, the runway is ripped up. I mean, I don't know how we're going to get our medevacs out of here, I think, close. I mean, Atlantic Traders will probably carry on their business at another airport or whatever. But still, we need to, to take care of our medevac priorities, I guess. So on that, I'm going to go to our DTI. And we all, we've all talked about this big agreement, cost share agreement between the province and Grammeranam, how wonderful it is and everything about it, but we just really couldn't get our hands on it. Well, finally, after, I don't know, eight, 10 months, we've finally finalized it and got that agreement here. My opinion is it isn't as great as we've all led this agreement to be, but nobody's could actually read it to understand. But we've gone through our invoices. Historically, Alyssa would get four, four invoices a year with a, with a number on the bottom and that's what was paid and that was it. So, so we've dug into that a little more and we've got an itemized agenda of what, what those costs break down to. And it's clearly, we are paying for maintenance of Route 776 in Ingles Head, which, which was a surprise, I guess, because everybody was led to believe that, that was 100% on the province, no cost to us, but there is a cost. And it's, I don't know the percentage, but it's, I don't think it's 50% like our back roads. It is. Okay, well, there we go. So I don't understand this really big deal that everybody seems to think we have. I guess we'll dig into it a little more. But at the end of the day, the, it's an agreement, it's signed 15 years ago. I mean, it is what it is. But I think moving forward, as we go through this, we can maybe, I don't know what we can do really, but we're going to dig into it and try to, try to get the province on board with resurfacing the roads. But I don't know where that is. We're going to do our tenders, our tenders are going out for brush cutting. Hopefully, we're going to have that, Chris, right soon as well. We've got it, I think we got a draft of what, what that'll look like. So we just got to get that out and get it published and out into the mainstream. Hopefully, some of our, our local contractors will spark their interest, will participate in that competition. So I think that's about it. I have nothing really, nothing big to say, other than we're working all the time moving things forward. But my other committee members are here, the mayor's here, we were all participating in the meeting. We have a, a good relationship with DTI. I think we have a lot of high-level employees with DTI that, that are on the round table with us and they're all concerned with our concerns. So hopefully, it's, it'll, it'll, it'll be beneficial to the Village of Grammeranam going forward.
Thank you. Councillor Layton, do I see you wanting to address that or?
No, I was just going to bring up the, the fact that this is the first time, I think, that the municipality's ever been responsible for the tendering of this ditching and bush cutting, which is a huge first step for us moving forward. So councillor Layton's done a fantastic job mediating that with, with that group. So now it's just a matter of where this is our first time, making sure that we get the proper tender package with the, with the conditions on it that DTI is looking for, to make sure that, you know, how wide of the ditch they looked forward to. I mean, how far from the center line do they expect the bush cutting to be? It's just different things like that, so.
We're just getting our feet wet in this whole transportation issue, but.
Councillor Green?
I think what some of us looked at at the time as it being a sweet deal with DTI was Route 776 in Ingles Head, agreed the maintenance, the plowing and whatnot is 50/50, or that's my remembrance of it. But the capital cost is 100% province. When they replaced the bridge at Grand Harbour Brook, didn't cost the village a cent. And after seeing what it cost to replace the little ones up above, that would have been a substantial cost to the village to do that. So the, the operating, not so much maybe, but the capital, it was quite a saving. And if the estimates I've heard for retopping it are real, it is significant.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you, councillor Layton. 15-4 is the Library Committee Report, Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just some updates of what's been going on at our library. Parents appreciated the seasonal and special occasion grab-and-go craft kits that were offered through the months of varying COVID restrictions. Kits offered included popsicle sticks, scarecrows, snowmen, tissue paper hearts, polar bears, St Patrick's Day rainbow, pot of gold, and some Easter baskets. The opportunity for boring puzzles has been a welcome addition for our own puzzlers. A sincere thank you to the Kennebec cases public library for providing some supplies of these puzzles to build the collection. And our first adult grab-and-go craft kits were offered in February. And with, it was surprising to see the immediate response. And we'll be preparing with additional kits for our next adult craft kit, which will be available in the next two weeks. And I was talking to Kendra tonight and that should be within the next day or two. They should be ready to go. So to keep an eye on our, on the library, you can call there and, and find out when they'll be ready. So with continuing promotion, we've noticed additional patrons taking advantage of our curbside pickup, which is available anytime. We've continued to see an increase in the turnout at our Scholastic Book Fairs, resulting in a profit of $1,542 at our recent spring book fair. Our ongoing books fair, our ongoing book sale was successfully launched in February. Many patrons are appreciating the opportunity to pick up a few treasures and they'll be dropping in for just that purpose. We're currently working with the BGC, the Anchorage Park and Waterfront Fabricating to install some stakes for our story walk planned for the upcoming summer and fall. And if anybody's seen it, we, we actually started it late last fall and the kids really loved it. But we've got some pictures here of what happened. The kids could go along and the different pages would be set up at different stations. And as the kids went down the trail, they could read a book. So they really liked it. Some of the adults liked it. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We've been in communication with Grammeranam Nursing Home administrators to discuss how we can best serve their residents. It was determined that we would begin with book deposits and build from there as appropriate. And the first book deposit was dropped off in March with, with CD players, audio books, large print books and DVDs. And they've sent, they've recently received requests for authors' book titles, which will be included in the next deposit. And in February, our board approved the hiring of a tutor for a total of eight hours per week for a three-month tutoring program. The intent of this program was to help with academic gaps associated with school closures and the disruption of literacy learning over the past couple of years. And Kendra worked with the Grammeranam Community School staff to identify students who could benefit from the program. And it seems to be working out really well.
Thank you.
Any questions? 16-1, Bylaw Number 5722, a bylaw to replace Bylaw 37-02, a bylaw of the Village of Grammeranam respecting the composition of the council and the remuneration of the mayor and councillors. First and second readings by councillor Cara Greenlaw.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm glad you had trouble with that word as well, because I have said it too much recently.
I thought it was a trick right off the top.
This, this actually came about because it hasn't been updated since 2002, which is quite a, quite a long time. And this council's fairly busy with meetings, so it kind of makes sense to increase our, our meeting amounts. So I'll start the reading on this. This is Bylaw 57-22, a bylaw of the Village of Grammeranam respecting the composition of the council and the remuneration of the mayor and councillors. The council of the Village of Grammeranam duly assembled hereby enacts as follows. Composition of council. One, the council consists of A, a mayor, B, a deputy mayor, C, eight councillors. Remuneration of mayor, deputy mayor and council. Two, the remuneration of the mayor shall be as follows. A, an honorarium of $4,000 per year payable quarterly, provided that the mayor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. B, in the event that the mayor is absent from more than two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his or her honorarium according to the percentage of the regular meetings that he, she does attend. C, an extra meeting allowance of $100 per meeting payable quarterly to a maximum of 50 meetings over and above the regular meetings per year. Three, the remuneration of the deputy mayor shall be as follows. A, an honorarium of $2,500 per year payable quarterly, provided that the deputy mayor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. B, in the event that the deputy mayor is absent from more than two of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly, the clerk shall prorate his or her honorarium according to the percentage of the regular meetings that he or she does attend. C, an extra meeting allowance of $50 per meeting payable quarterly to the maximum of 50 meetings over and above the regular meetings per year. Four, the remuneration of each councillor shall be as follows. A, an honorarium of $1,500 per year payable quarterly, provided that the councillor attends 10 of the 12 regular council meetings held yearly. B, in the event that the councillor is absent from more than two of the 12 regular council meetings yearly, the clerk shall prorate his or her honorarium according to the percentage of meetings he, she does attend. C, an extra meeting allowance of $50 per meeting payable quarterly to a maximum of 50 meetings over and above the regular council meetings per year. Five, Bylaw Number 37-02, a bylaw to amend Bylaw 27-00, a bylaw of the municipality of Grammeranam respecting the composition of council and the remuneration of the mayor and councillors is hereby repealed.
So that was the first reading of Bylaw 57-22. And I think just for anybody who's watching, the only real change in that was the number of meetings that we will be reimbursed for. The other dollar figures all stayed the same.
They stayed the same, yes.
Any comments? Hearing none. I'll ask councillor Greenlaw to do the second reading by title only, unless you really want to read all of it again.
It's, it's tempting, but no. So the second reading. Bylaw 57-22, a bylaw of the Village of Grammeranam respecting the composition of the council and the remuneration of the mayor and councillors.
Thank you, councillor Greenlaw. So that will be open for public comment for 30 days and we will deal with it, I think, at our June meeting. I think we've got the 30 days in at that point.
That's right.
16-2, Bylaw Number 56-22, bylaw to amend Bylaw 52-19, the World Plan Bylaw, third reading by title only, councillor Greenlaw.
I'd actually like to make a motion to postpone this to our June meeting.
You heard the motion by councillor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Green, question? All those in favor?
Aye.
Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 17, Approval to Pay the Following Invoices. From 17-1, the General Operating Fund, Beers Neal. It's the gas tax reporting and that is for $4,456.25.
I think you have two of them.
Oh, sorry, yes, I was thinking, yeah. Charlotte Emergency Medical Training, that is for $2,012.50, and Trace Planning and Design for $13,409. Sorry, I thought they were in the next one.
I'll make the motion to pay those.
You heard the motion by councillor Greenlaw. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by councillor Boyd, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 17-2, from the General Capital Fund, we have Atlantic Wind Door Limited. It's to replace the doors at the transfer station for $34,155. Island Waste and Recycling, it's for the baler delivery and the bail wire. It's for $599.53. Dutchman Contracting, unloading the baler for $215.63. Most of those, I believe, are covered by the gas tax and you'll see the motions down below to cover those once we approve the payment of these. You heard the motion by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second.
Seconded by councillor Toll, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18, which is motion to transfer funds. The first one is 18-1. It's a motion to transfer $30,972.75 from the gas tax fund to the General Capital Fund. You heard the motion by councillor Toll. Do we have a seconder? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. 18-2, it's a motion to transfer $560.98 from the gas tax fund to the General Capital Fund. Heard the motion by councillor Toll. Do we have a seconder?
I'll second that.
Seconded by councillor Greenlaw, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. And finally, 18-3, which is a motion to transfer $195.53 from the gas tax fund to the General Capital Fund. Heard the motion by councillor Toll? Seconded by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons, question? All those in favor? Contrary-minded? Motion carried. Number 19 is closed session and we have one item to discuss under legal in closed session. Heard the motion by councillor, or by Deputy Mayor Fitzsimmons. I knew I was going to do that. Seconder? Seconded by councillor Boyd. All those in favor? Motion carried.